... instalations sidewalks, so that'll be the last thing to talk about. The low impact development technique is a change we want to suggest the planning commission, something we've been working on for awhile. It's really more of a results-oriented type evaluation from our side. I've been doing a lot of research on this, a lot of work into it. But primarily what we're trying to do is allow more techniques available to the engineer to design these systems that maybe fit the site a little bit better. We want to compliment the previous planning commissioner who did this, he's got those low impact designs, lid development, it was really, I think, really cutting edge and I think they did a great job of having this and allowing Farrick to use these. We do think maybe now we can maybe move a little further in allowing some other type of design and techniques and we'll make sure we compliment them.
For what they did previously because it was really, I think, the first in the county for sure and I don't know if anybody else in Alabama uses the lid, require the lid techniques. That was very cutting edge. We want to try, maybe look at maybe some, a different avenue and allow more type of low impact design techniques and I'll ask Buford to come up and go over this and kind of just go over kind of what our concepts were, some of the baselines that we're looking at, the results that we hope to get out of this and also a handbook that would give the development community some guidelines as well. Won't be opening it, but there'll be a guidebook that will be, we will reference and use to provide them some guidance on type, type of construction, how it should be constructed and so forth. So Buford, do you want to take over?
So Chairman Commissioners, as Wayne was saying, we wanted to describe the concept and as you've seen many times and is often, it is often a standard occurrence is that when we have a subdivision application or a multiple occupancy project or as applicable, that invariably there is a request for waiver of a certain number of LID techniques. And what we wanted to do today is without going extremely technical, just give you, give you the concepts behind a future recommendation from this staff to change how that operates. And so let me first of all talk about the technical aspect here is that Article 5, Section F of the subdivision regulations, there's paragraph number 11 and it says required use of low-impact LID techniques. And Section B says at a minimum, the use of 10 of the below LID techniques is required in any and all proposed developments. And then it goes through a list of 15 different items. And so we see those, but invariably the feedback we get from the engineering community is that they cannot find 10 items to go on a site, if a site is available for it. So what we're going to show you today, I've excerpted the, what I, what we call colloquially the Low Impact Development Handbook, which is a publication of the Alabama Cooperative Extension Service. Its actual title you'll see on a future slide. What I've done here and what you'll see in these slides is I've extracted of that booklet contains eight, it contains like, it contains 12 chapters of LID techniques. Some are subcategories within that and it'll describe it here. But what I'm going to show you here to back up and to reinforce why the future change is requested from your staff is because of the sediment removal that they actually show in these techniques. So we'll begin with bio-retention. And I certainly won't read the entire description to you, but you see on your screen right there, "A bio-retention cell is a depression in the landscape that captures and stores runoff for a short time while providing habitat for native vegetation as both flood and drought tolerant." And they go on to describe it in greater detail. But what I'd like to call your attention to, this is an excerpt from that, from that Low Impact Development Handbook. You see at the bottom there, the formal name is Planning for Stormwater: Developing a Low-Impact Solution, Alabama Cooperative Extension Service. So you notice, this shows the entire pollutant removal table. First of course, first and foremost is sediment and you notice A, B, and C. And you'll see that repeated through the slides I show here. And you notice that their document references their data sources. So A being the North Carolina Department of Environment and Natural Resources, B, the City of Auburn, and C, the Georgia Manual from 2001. And you'll see they'll add some footnotes right there. Now, in addition to sediment, and this is not the focus of this meeting, but I'll point to you, nitrogen phosphorus, which are basically a lot, and many times that occurs from fertilizer. So the uptake and evapotranspiration from some of these techniques aids in those types of removals than metals and pathogens. So you notice here is a technique that depending upon your source of data removes at least 80% of the total suspended solids. So that is the focus of the document we will bring before you for a future consideration is make it outcome-based, removal of 80% of total suspended solids. So next would be a constructed stormwater wetland. And what I like about their document is they explain some of the different names by which it may be called, such as constructed wetland, stormwater wetland, pocket wetland, traditional constructed stormwater wetland, shallow marsh wetland. And those are, "An area created, an area created, wetland areas designed to treat stormwater to function similarly to a natural wetland," and so forth. And what I'll call your attention to do here is again, if you look at the table, they have four sources of data. All of them are showing a total suspended solids removal of at least 80% from, in this case, four different sources of data. You see the other pollutant removal rates shown in there as well. Next, permeable pavement. And that is not, I do not know at what location that public story is, that is just a sample photo from there. But other names for permeable pavement include modular paving systems, enhanced porosity concrete, porous pavement, modular plastics permeable paving. It's a pervious surface used in place of traditional concrete or asphalt to infiltrate stormwater. But I think what's very interesting here is that you notice in the pollutant removal, they really don't, they have no data regarding sediment removal and they focus on the nutrient removal, the metals removal, the pathogens. And I excerpted, I excerpted a comment and put it in the upper right corner of the screen right there, so it's total suspended solids. TSS reductions were not qualified because it is not recommended that these systems trap sediment due to their propensity to clot. So it's recommended for other pollutant removal, not necessarily total suspended solids. And then grass swales, infiltration swales, wet swales. So that can be a vegetated swell, bioswale, wetland channel, dry swell, wet swell, conveyance channel, reinforced swell, grassy swales, biofilter. And it's a water quality swell in a shallow, open channel stabilized with grass or other herbaceous vegetation designed to filter pollutants and convey stormwater. So here, there's mostly consistency among the data. You notice that they give two categories, a grass swell or an enhanced swell. The enhanced swell, depending upon data source, is an 80% removal. One data source reports a 50% removal. You know, the grass swell produces a 35% or, or an 80% removal, again, depending upon the data source. And then level spreaders and grass filter strips. The lever spreaders are devices that create or diffuse sheet flow that is greatly distributed or dispersed to disclose flow velocity and discourage erosive forces associated with concentrated flows. So forgive me for the size of the picture right there, but you notice there, that is a concrete knee wall or wing wall that backfill has been placed against it and then you have the grassed area adjacent to it. So as that area increases in volume, once it begins to outfall, it's going to outfall in a gradual sheet going across the top of that device. And you can see the inflow pipe and you can see the, looks like gabion stone as a discharge, underneath the discharge. So here you see a much lower TSS removal depending upon your data source, either 40 or 50%. So the point there, what I, what we wanted to demonstrate is that you saw depending upon how consistency the data is, maximum five techniques. If you remove, if you remove the permeable paving, you're left with, you're left with four from which to choose. So certainly it's in the best interest of the engineer to choose the techniques that'll best utilize the site. What the end game is here is, and again, this is grossly oversimplified, Richard Johnson may, may cringe if I say this incorrectly, but basically you choose the technique that removes the total suspended solids and then it's simply a matter of dividing up the area. The primary calculation that you'll see among the many calculations in the stormwater calculations will basically be the treatment volume. And so we have a method that's, they're, one of the methods, the primary method in the subdivision regulations is the rational method. It gives actually, which is a very simple equation and it's looking at a first flush of a storm event. It's going to look at 1.8 inches of rainfall. There are some coefficients built in there and then the rest is the impervious surface of the site which the engineer knows as he or she is designing it. And then after that calculation is run, it tells you the treatment volume. So that will tell you the treatment volume of a bio-retention area or of a regular detention pond. Certainly when the engineer is designing those structures, they will certainly add some additional, add some additional size so it has some additional treatment volume to also give it some more infiltration time. But that is essentially what it takes to design one of these types of systems. So with those number of unit, of techniques in that manual that are available, that's basically our justification for bringing before you a revision to the subdivision regulations that'll eliminate or remove the requirement for imposing 10 LID techniques and allowing the engineer to choose from the techniques in that manual. We'll sort that manual, we'll they can, we'll cite that manual in the revision and then the engineer can choose from those techniques which best fit the site. And so Chairman-
Choose, choose one or more?
What best fits the site. What best fits the site. So if that can be accomplished with one, it would be one. But, and perhaps I didn't articulate it greatly enough, it would be in the best interest of the engineer to choose multiple types because then the different types would then reduce the treatment volume of each type. So if you had a bio-retention area that's going to retain your stormwater, certainly pre-treating that through swales or constructed wetlands that also from our data here can remove 80% or 50%, that's pre-treating that material before it goes to a retention-detention area. So certainly it's in their best interest to use multiple, multiple, multiple techniques where applicable.
I seem to remember that the city does not like us to use permeable paving, is that right?
It is certainly a technique that is currently contemplated and allowed in the subdivision regulations and-
We've used it several places.
And we actually, yes, we actually have, there's a standalone, Dr. Thayer, there's actually a standalone ordinance requiring 25% permeable paving.
And you were kind of lukewarm on permeable paving because you said it retained?
Well, Dr. Thayer, I wanted to report and wanted to report exactly what is, what the data is supporting. So what the Cooperative Extension Service document is stating is that that is more useful for pollutant removal of a type such as fertilizers and pathogens and metals and not as effective for suspended solids.
And you're, everything you're discussing now is just in terms of quantity and we're removing 80% of the total suspended solids. So the thing we're not talking about is quantity.
Yeah.
And until we deal with quantity, we're going to have impacts on quality because the cumulative-
That's right.
-increase in stormwater going down through our watersheds is going to cause erosion if we keep increasing it.
You have the vocabulary, I was trying to get around to.
Well, the, the technique, obviously the individual technique in our document that we're using and also in the chart that's in the existing form of the subdivision regulations specifies the quality, the quality of treatment. Then the engineers have to calculate the quantity of treatment. So that's where we use the term treatment volume. So that's sizing, that's actually sizing that detention area, retention area, the swales, the vegetated channels, et cetera. With the, with the one that captures the most focus being the retention-detention area.
One of, one of the big, excuse me, go ahead.
Well, to clarify what I, you're talking about the quantity being treated, I'm talking about until our regulations address the quantity leaving the site and we get to a point of managing the quantity leaving the site and managing the increase in keeping it at a sustainable level, we're going to continue that. So it's more of a general.
And let me clarify, the only thing we're talking about modifying is the use of LIDs for post-development stormwater quality treatment. The stormwater management requirement is not being touched. So let me rephrase what the storm, when you're proposing to develop a site, first of all, the engineer has to go through the exercise to determine what flows off that site for each of the design storm events, the 10, the 5, the 10, the 25, the 15, 100-year event. And that becomes the allowable discharge rate post-development. So then they do their plans, they determine all of the impervious areas that they're adding and then they take that same set of storm events and they calculate what runs off now post-development. They still have to retain, detain, and capture that differential volume and they have to regulate it to not release any faster than pre-development. So that's not changing, okay?
Yeah.
What we're saying is that our, what we have done to ourselves is that we set a goal that when water comes through the system, before it leaves the site, 80% of the total suspended solids stay on that site before it flows.
Right.
Now, the problem is, we got hung up that we said you have to use 10 methodologies to achieve that performance. We're saying the performance has to remain, but we'll let you, using acceptable standards, determine what methodologies achieve that performance so that that water, when it leaves the site, is not leaving any faster than pre-development and is not carrying any more than 20% total suspended solid.
So, I'll finish, not to beat this into the ground. That's understood. So the point, and, and I, I agree with the flexibility being needed. I was trying to make the larger point that right now we talk about the rate, that we're not exceeding, changing the rate that flows off the site post-development. We are changing the quantity.
Oh, absolutely.
And there's, and other areas that are facing the kind of development pressures that we are have started limiting that quantity where you have a maximum impervious area or you have a, your post-development runoff quantity, not just rate, cannot increase. So I was kind of looking forward, saying that I do appreciate what's being done and the flexibility to manage the quality, but I think we're having a, a larger issue with quality because as, as the, as the stormwater flows off the site, we're managing the quality at the site and then it goes into a larger receiving channel. If we don't manage the quantity of water that, that is landing in those channels and in our streams and going into the bay, the streams erode, you know, as you proceed down the watershed and more and more water enters the system, it, you've caused erosion.
And that is the, that is the exact problem that we, we are challenged with is the fact is, is that you're right, the, the peak flow is not exceeded, but the flow period of that near to peak flow pre-development is extended over a longer time. So there is a more volume over time that goes to those downstream, downstream channels. And here's the problem. If the peak pre-development caused that channel to erode, but it only occurred for a very short period of time, we've now taken that period of time of that peak flow and stretched out over a longer time. So we're exposing it to erosion, scour for a longer period of time and thus we see channel degradation. What is the ultimate goal? Having models of our watershed, having the proposed development put into the model and we may find out we're better off getting the water out of there earlier because we have higher peaks coming upstream and that way you start perfecting where you minimize the number of times that channel is exceeding the scour velocity for, for that particular channel.
Agreed. Or we allow less water to enter the system.
That's correct, but, but you get into, I mean, eventually you, you will hit a wall, meaning that, that you-
Yeah.
You can only detain and keep so much before you run out of space. And again, that may be a goal that we want to pursue because if you've got to have more space for detention, you have less space for development, but I'm not sure how that will go off over in the economic form of things, so.
You make such a good point because, you know, we try to separate the LID and the discharge and then one thing that is so hard to understand is that if you allow that same discharge rate for a longer period of time, downstream the water gets higher. And you make a good point and we discussed this some in one of the meetings after the BP oil spill out in Robertsdale. You know, I think of that, that subdivision we passed, not real recently, probably about a year and a half ago out on Red Barn Road. You know, that's a prime example of a subdivision that we probably should have just had a pipe going straight to Fish River because, you know, the bottom part of it was less than 100 yards from Fish River and the water would get off of that thing and get out of the way. But when you have that water, that same rate coming longer and longer, then it starts meeting and backing up in the rivers more and more. And, but, and that's where the LID can affect it some, maybe not a lot, but the more water when they put in the, you know, just the, the wetlands or the bio-retention where the water actually stays and gets absorbed into the ground, then at least that's less water going. How much it adds up over time, I don't know. It probably makes a real big difference on your one-year and your five-year event, on your 100-year event, it probably doesn't really matter much.
If you have a site where you have the ability to have a lot of percolation, and I have seen sites in our area on the Eastern Shore that, that had good sand layers. I've seen intensely developed sites that didn't discharge water until you had an exceedance event, 25, 50-year recurrence event because they had such favorable conditions that they were recharging the aquifer. Anytime that we can do that, that is, that is the ultimate LID. The other one that I'm a fan of and I think we, you know, that we may even look at this is, is that, that I've always had a propensity that, that one of the best LID techniques is a permanent pool volume, meaning that you, you design your development with, with a lake feature or a pond feature of pretty significant size, but it's also an amenity. But it has a wonderful freeboard capacity and it has low-flow orifice because basically if you can keep water between 24 and 72 hours, you can dissipate through Hooke's Law most of the suspended solid. But the other thing is, is that, that, that freeboard volume is so, so much capacity in there and it's only discharging a small low-flow orifice that you're giving relief to the downstream properties because you're, you're, you're holding that first flush on that site and you're metering it out over a very long period of time. And, and that has, that's really effective because it just takes the pressure off of those channels because when you can, when you can meter it, and it becomes an amenity to the development too, to have that nice big lake that can fluctuate three feet during the storm event and meter that water out.
It's probably about three years ago now, before you came over here, we had a project, it's being built now, it's right next to the post office. It's a big three-story building and it's got a flat roof, which I don't think is a good idea. But what we had talked, Jennifer and I had talked about the fact that the drainage system in that particular area off of Fairhope Avenue was very old and inadequate and there was some very serious problems in that area. And I asked the architect and the developer if they had thought about using a rain collection device, a water interruption device of some sort on the building in order not to discharge because off a flat roof, just charging out of one discharge point, you're going to have a fire hose. And I was hoping they would put something in there. And nobody seemed to know what that was or how it could be possibly used or whatever. Is there any possibility we might incorporate more of those here? It's like rain barrels what it basically is.
Yeah, there was a developer I was involved in that they, they put a large cistern, basically a fancy septic tank that they put all their downspouts and then they pumped out of it for all their irrigation. And, and it had enough capacity that, you know, for the, the two small rain events, no water left the site. All, all the downspouts went right into the cistern and they reused that water. That's a wonderful LID technique and believe it or not, that cistern will eventually have to be opened up and cleaned out because it'll be full of sediment at the bottom one day.
Well, and that's something you start to see happening in denser areas or smaller sites when you, maybe you can't have a large, you know, detention area, but you can have a, you can have a encapsulated, you know, a hardened detention area.
Yeah, there's a lot of techniques out there and I think that this, this body has the discretion to, to look at anything that's offered as long as the engineering science supports the outcome of that. And yes, I do think we need to start looking at total volume over time discharge and how that affects development, so.
Can I ask a question? Because we, and I'm just going back and I don't really recall, but we put the folks that did the original regs, put in that section about the 10% rule. Does that in any way address what she is talking about? That, the 10% here? Because I thought that was supposed to address some of that. I mean, I might be wrong, I'm not the train judge person.
By the way, Richard, an example of a subdivision where water doesn't come off of it is Patoshays down at the intersection of Battles and Battles where you've got that white sand that, you know, and part of that is on public right of way, but it, you know, that thing just absorbs, I mean, while you watch it.
Oh, absolutely. And I've been involved in a project where we, where our goal was to build a wet pond and we can't get it to hold water. It sucks it out of the bottom faster than it can get in there. So, you know, and now we're lining it with clay.
Do you need us to do anything on this Wayne or?
Chairman, we don't, we don't need anything. It'll probably be coming back on your agenda for approval at some point.
That's great, right.
We'll shoot for next month, but it depends on what our load is for the next month. But also to make, make you aware also, we had a, a meeting in March, a public meeting. We invited the engineering community to come and the public and we talked about LID and some other things and got their feedback as well. And we, of course, read some of their comments into some of our, our concepts which we presented tonight. And so we did get feedback from them. I think it was well received as far as, you know, making more options available. And, and so I think that went over very well. And so, but yeah, it'll be coming back on, on the agenda. We'll draft something and have, and have it ready for approval with the planning commission so wishes.
I think it looks, I think it looks fantastic.
Richard, one other thought, and it's going to sound like I'm going in the opposite direction, but it's not intended for that because there is a consideration that we need to have and we need to understand as it relates to stormwater releases. And that is, is if we remove all of the sediment from, and capture all of the sediment out of that and then we release and we've got multiple discharges within a given system, there's a term for that water that's released and we all know that the volume of material or sediment that the body of water will pick up and carry has to reach an equilibrium. It's called hungry water. The volume times the velocity is the volume of sediment that it's going to pick up. And if we're releasing that clean water, guess what? Fly Creek is a prime example of what happens when you discharge greater volumes that don't really carry sediment. When they built the Four Lane, they diverted all of that water off of there into Fly Creek. Did they have a Fly Creek? Fly Creek, you can shoot a bow and arrow up Fly Creek now. Every bow and every twist and turn is now gone out of Fly Creek. The term for water that doesn't carry sediment is called hungry water.
That's right.
It's hungry for sediment. And if it doesn't carry it with it, when it comes, it's going to get it somewhere. And guess what's happening to our gullies here in Fairhope? That's one of the reasons that we're, that we're losing a lot of the quality of our wetlands is because of the discharge and the, and the temporary removal of that sediment which then we're putting hungry water into a system and it's going to get it. It's going to scour it off the bottom or it's going to scour it off the slopes, off the stream banks.
Is that a velocity issue?
It is a velocity, it is a volume issue, it's a velocity issue, but it's also a sediment load carrying issue. Look, everybody knows nature is nothing but a, but a set of equilibriums.
Don't forget Hooke's Law.
Huh? Know what?
But I mean, rain doesn't have-
We caught that, Richard. You caught that? We drafted it for you if you need it over here too.
It will, it will get it though. Rainwater doesn't carry sediment, but it will get it once it, it gets to the place. So, it's a, it really is a dilemma.
There's no doubt and, and again, even in my short career as a civil engineer, it's amazed how much we have moved to different technologies and a lot of what I consider softer engineering practices and everything else. And we're going to keep evolving and, and, you know, the planning commission a decade from now will probably be talking about a whole new set of philosophies toward design. And I think we are getting better and we're, we're also learning from mistakes. For years and years it was hardened and line a channel and then we found out that that caused a whole new set of problems. And so again, now we're going and putting step pulls in and checks and slowing it down and trying to make it act like a natural system again. And, you know, the, it is, I will tell you, I think we, we've made gains. I think we have a very solid set of subdivision regulations. The biggest challenge that we have right now with this one is we basically have compelled almost every applicant to come in here and not be in compliance because we've set a requirement that's not, it was well-intentioned but was not practically applicable.
I just have one more question, but I'm going to need to add that.
I'm done.
Okay. What can we, I do fully support and think there's a critical need to have that watershed modeling done in order for us to inform any future regulation beyond this? And, and when you mentioned economic development, I think that's actually pretty vital to our economic development that we're ensuring the water quality of, you know, in the bay and, and that's a pretty big quality of life, life issue. What can we do as a planning commission or what can we do as voters or as city council people? What do we need to do to make that happen?
Well, the good news is it is starting to happen. We actually had a meeting today. We have Tatumville funded to have the first watershed model done for that gully system. And, you know, our ultimate objective is to keep coming back to looking for sources of funds, whether it be from the council or through grants and do all eight shed, all eight of our watersheds modeled so that then we can take the data that we're getting from the design engineer of the post-development hydrograph, put it in that model and see if there's unintended effects. Or we may go back to that and say- Or we may go back to that and say, you need to go ahead and release yours at a higher rate, because we want to dial the system early, because we've got all this development upstream that's holding back, and we're trying to keep that peak flow at a point where we don't have that channel erosion. And one of the best things that I like about the modeling is that it gives you those velocities for those different design events, so you can predict where you, and you can go calibrate in the field, because if you see there's bank erosion, and the model's showing there's an exceedance of velocities there, that is a calibration. That's telling you that the model is showing exactly what's happening in place. Or if you are showing erosion in the model, and it's not happening in the field, there needs to be some additional calibration and checking on that. Ready for me to jump into sidewalks?
Absolutely.
And I'm going to keep this short. For those that weren't here, you know, we had a dialogue with this body a while back, and I gave an unsatisfactory answer to our esteemed chairman, is that I did not have a good solution to the problem of sidewalks. And we had a very good discussion, and then-
That's called an honest answer, because there's no really good answer.
So, let's talk about a traditional subdivision. We require the design engineer, as part of the design document, to design a sidewalk system for that subdivision. That requires for most typical subdivisions that there be five-foot sidewalks on each side of the road. Every lot has sidewalks on its frontage, and with that goal, that sidewalk system to tie into any existing system or any future system. Then the engineer goes through that process, does a sidewalk plan, does typical details, puts all the notes and details showing that that sidewalk's going to meet ADA compliance. You approve a subdivision, a contractor is hired by the developer, and they build the subdivision, the roads, the gutters, the stormwater management system installs the utilities, and they install the sidewalks just in common areas that front the road. Then, we approve a final plat and accept a bond, a fiduciary financial guarantee that the sidewalks will be put in, and that bond is a 24-month bond period of time. And those lots go to construction, and of course, the requirement is placed on the home builder that they will build the sidewalk at time of home construction. Now, right now, homes are getting built pretty fast, but we've all been here when there's two homes built here, and then three empty lots and two homes, and mom and the kids have to step out in the road and walk down and get back on the sidewalk. And some of us may have been around during about 2008 and 2009, when all of a sudden all subdivisions stopped growing and building, and folks went without a complete sidewalk system for four or five years, and now that has picked up again. The other issue that we have is that the design engineer did his part, and we have a final walkthrough, and everything that we can see and touch at that time as your staff, we can certify, and that engineer can certify, is built per the plans and per our regulations. But, we don't get to look at those sidewalks in front of the home, that falls on the burden of the building inspector. The problem is, is that the design engineer never gets the opportunity to go back and verify that his design was followed either, because once the subdivision is finalized, and those lots sell, he's really not part of that development anymore. And what we have found is, we've ended up with a bunch of sidewalks built by the home builder that are out of compliance, meaning the cross slope is too much, or where the driveway is, there's not a bench for the crossing to be, and all kind of issues. So, the question, and I will tell you, before we bonded sidewalks, Nancy did not have any gray hairs, okay? She deals with the bonding, because let me tell you what happens. After two years, maybe half the houses are built in that phase. So, they come back with her and say, well, come out and verify, we built this many, so we want to reduce the bond, and they submit a new bond, and this goes on ad nauseam. And one day, ultimately, all the homes are built, and the sidewalks are complete. That's not a great system, because, one, we never have any point in time when we know the complete sidewalk system is complete and meets ADA requirement, and the design engineer can sign off to that fact. The other thing is, is we're constantly going back to home builders and having to get corrective efforts made sometimes after the fact, plus we're managing a pretty hairy bonding requirement. So, Mr. Turner and some of you expressed the desire that you think it was best that the sidewalks be built at the time of final plat. And I wasn't sure I was a fan of that then, but I have spent a long time thinking about it. At our workshop we did in March, we kind of floated the idea, and most of the folks there were developers and engineers, and they didn't throw any rocks at me, and they didn't seem to get too upset about it. But if you are willing to consider it, I think it's time to go back and require sidewalks be in place, in full, at the time of final plat inspection. That we also add a requirement that the design engineer will add a certification of ADA compliance, meaning it's going to say, I have inspected these sidewalks that I have designed, and I certify that they meet the intent of the ADA requirements and per the design specifications. We have sat down with Eric, our building official, and said, are you comfortable that when, as part of your CO, that you're going to inspect the sidewalk out front of that house? And if there's any damage, whether the builder says he didn't do it or not, that you're not going to issue the CO until that sidewalk is repaired? Because that has always been the concern. If the sidewalk is there, and then the home construction begins, they back a concrete truck over it, they back a delivery truck over it, it gets cracked, who's going to fix it? Where at least when it's bonded, that if we go back to release the bond, we have a way to do that. Neither system is perfect, but I think that the one way we can ensure ADA compliance, and ensure that those folks that move in that neighborhood have a complete sidewalk system, is to have them installed at final plat. I'm looking for thoughts and guidance.
Who's responsible for the sidewalk if it gets broken?
Well, at this point in time, is that we still require the two-year materials and workmanship bond. So, and that's every improvement within the right-of-way. So, at least for two years, we have a mechanism to make sure that they get fixed. Once that bond is released, and it doesn't have a continuation, but it's a two-year warranty, basically, once it's released, technically, all that infrastructure is the city's. So, if there's damage or whatever, and we cannot tie it to a CO of a house, then Public Works is going to go out there and fix it. That happens a lot anyway. So, that's not an unusual circumstance, meaning that if there's a broken sidewalk, even if it's relatively new, and a citizen is called and says, can you fix it? And there's no one that we can hang it on, and the workmanship and materials bond was just released, we're going out to fix it. That's what Public Works do. We maintain the infrastructure within the right-of-way.
But if you can't get a CO-
But if you can't get a-
You can't get a CO prior to the sidewalk being fixed, what you're saying.
That's correct.
Well, then you're putting the burden on the homeowner there.
Absolutely right. But the assumption, right, wrong, or indifferent, is that if we knew it was intact before home construction began, and now we've gone to do a CO for a new home, and it's cracked in front of that home, the assumption is that that was damage that occurred during construction, and they need to fix it.
In other words, Craig, you can get a pumper truck, or you can take the concrete in by wheelbarrow, you know, or you can-
Yeah, they're going to do that.
Or you can crack the sidewalk-
Or you can fix the sidewalk.
And pay 250 bucks and fix that little section of the sidewalk, and it's-
What about the draft-
Currently, sorry. Currently, if a sidewalk is broken during home construction now, a CO is not issued until that sidewalk is fixed, currently. Now, that's even, the homeowner is still required, or the home builder is still required to put in that sidewalk before they'll get a CO right now. So, when the inspectors go out for final building inspection to issue a CO, they're checking sidewalks now, and if it's broken, they're having to fix it now.
Yeah, because those sidewalks now are being built at the time of home construction. But the biggest challenge is, our inspectors have really upped their game, and they're starting to take their levels out and check for cross slopes and all that. But again, it would, you know, we still don't know, and I wish I'd brought a picture. We went out, and they didn't even bother to move the stop sign, they just formed the sidewalk, and it stuck right in the sidewalk itself. They just poured right around the stop sign. That's insanity. I mean, it's, not much, took a post hole digger and a little wiggling to move that stop sign, but they just poured it right around it.
Mr. Johnson, I think it's important that this commission know that this was just changed a few years ago. I think I was sitting here when we voted to change it, because the broken sidewalk was constantly an issue. Performance bonded had expired, and, I mean, you got a lot, and I'm not saying that I know the solution, and if the homeowner, the homeowner's going to have to tell the builder, you're going to have to fix my sidewalk so I can get a CO, because you broke it. But I'm telling you that our phones rang off the hook, and it's just not an easy solution, because it's a catch-22. I mean, whatever way you do it, so let's really think about this. We have to think about this before we go back to where we were, because when we were in the other place, it was terrible. This is why we changed it to begin with. So, you need to know the history. This was changed just a few years ago.
Jack, what are you saying was, what was the system?
Well, we were making them pour the sidewalks, and then as people filled in neighborhoods, like you said, the concrete trucks backed over them and broke them into pieces, and then people didn't like having to go back. I'm not sure if they were forced to do it or not before they got a CO, I don't remember the history on that, but I know that, you know, we wound up with a lot of broken sidewalks and a lot of upset home buyers. And everybody looks to the city, whether you know it or not, they're going to all come to the city of Fairhope and say, fix our sidewalk. And we're going to say, it's your builder's responsibility if you want a CO. But they're going to say, city property now, time's expired, fix the sidewalk. They're going to expect the city of Fairhope to fix it.
We've been 360-
And then do that times 20,000.
We've been 360 degrees with this, because at first, we had no requirement, and you've got Quill Creek that's got lots 27 years old with no sidewalks in front of one little section. So, then we changed it, that they had to be built, you know, by the final inspection, that was never enforced, so we changed it so it had to be built within two years. That wasn't enforced, that was like where Spring Lakes was built. So, you've still got Spring Lakes that has sections without sidewalks.
But you're talking old, let me just clarify.
I'm talking ancient history. Then we changed it more recently, to where you had to build it, you know, for your, just like now, for your final plat approval. And we only had one subdivision come under that, and that was the subdivision over on County Road 13, just to the east of the round of Battles, the DR Horton subdivision. And I don't remember there being a whole lot of problems with that, but anyway, but a lot of builders really complained about that. Mostly builders that, you know, build their own houses, not custom builders, but mostly builders that, you know, like the guys that came in and got the six lots, and we're going to build all six, you know, they, you know, that was more the type that complained about that. And then, you know, so it's kind of like, here we are, you know, what we're trying to cure is a safety issue of lots being 26 years old and not having sidewalks in front of 100-foot sections. I'd love to see the city council come up the nortets and say, you know, if you own a lot, and there's a sidewalk on either side of you and not across your lot, that you've got to connect the dots, if it's been over X number of years. You know, I'd love to see something like that come up, but anyway.
Most of those that you're talking about are very old subdivisions. What we have been doing, and it's because we had to come up with a middle ground between all these things, is we let them propose a performance bond. It's supposed to be for two years. For the larger subdivisions like Firethorn, what we've ended up doing is, we'll reduce it as they go, but they still maintain a bond, so we never lose that chance to make them install it. And that's, it's not a perfect world, and Richard's right. I mean, personally, for me, it'd be a whole lot easier if everybody puts it in, and then I don't have to worry about these bonds.
And some of the risks are, is the city at some point going to have to come back, as uptight as ADA is getting on a lot of these issues, is the city going to have to come back and, you know, regrade subdivisions and put brand-new sidewalks in and pull them all up, because you've got one builder that, you know, builds at this level, the next builder next door, just ramps it right up, so nothing's, you know, a lot of cases, you've got things that are not ADA compliant.
How have, in cases, I guess I just don't understand the process. If you're building the sidewalks first, how do you manage not just construction access, but the driveway? They have to come back and put a driveway somewhere.
Well, that's usually not problematic in this sense. The majority of the development we see is done with either a valley or rolled curb, okay? So, that does not require a curb cut for a driveway. So, you have a planting strip between your sidewalk and the back curb, you infill there, and then you take it up to the house. Now, there's a good chance that the builder is going to make a conscientious decision, wherever his driveway, whichever orientation the garage is or whatever, that's going to be his damaged section, he's going to back over, and then when he pours the driveway, he's going to integrate that sidewalk portion that he damaged back in.
That would be the-
Again, Mr. Burrell reminded me of my original answer, that I didn't have a good solution to this problem. And I still, you know, I was having a spirited discussion with an engineer friend of mine, saying, well, the developers are not going to like this, because we're putting, the cost comes upfront, and but, and it may then be, again, reshared with the home builders, so are you causing costs to be there? But I said that at least, as your Public Works Director, it'd be nice to know that that one afternoon that we went out and did final inspection, I could say that there was one hour of one day of one year, that the sidewalks were complete and they were all ADA compliant, because that is something that I really can't say about most neighborhoods, because either the system is incomplete, or it was completed, and there was maybe a few segments in front of houses that are not compliant with ADA standards. So, I'm back, I've just talked myself back right around in circles again, but I'm looking for guidance for which way we want to go. And again, the system we have, we're managing it. It's not without its problems or challenges. I will tell you, Eric Cortinas and his staff have really stepped up their game, and he was the lead on organizing this ADA compliance, because he's trying to get all the home builders to come in and understand the principles behind building a sidewalk to ADA compliance. But just, you know, hearing y'all's frustration about incomplete sidewalk systems, and I realize that that's a big thing to people, that having that complete sidewalk in their neighborhood is an amenity and a safety and a, you know, a recreation concern. So, I'm looking for guidance here. I mean, and I was not present when we had that requirement, so I do not know, every new idea usually introduces new challenges, so.
Richard, didn't you say other places-
One thing they've done in New Orleans, for all the water, they found that there were people whose lots were continuously flooding anyway. So, they've bought out several of the lots, and they have put in water gardens, where people can actually recreate. And they run the water in there and treat the water, and they have several of them areas where they're now taking the water and letting it stay in that neighborhood, but using it and managing and circulating that water. And they've won all kinds of design awards for that.
Absolutely. So, looking for guidance.
I can tell you on the head when you talked about them taking a section out, don't they have to put some gravel approaches anyway?
Yes.
Well, I can tell you that they may have a gravel approach, because the whole entire frontage of the lot is open for any kind of delivery truck that wants to back across it. And you can see red clay leaving sites like that, you know, just about on every construction site. So, I would think that the sidewalk being built, with the self-defense requirement to be up against it in most cases, with the section out where the approaches would be, as you described, I think that would make it easier on every side. But now, they're still going to put the portal out on the sidewalk, I think, as well.
Well, if it's built to ADA compliant, it has no more than 2% cross slope, so it really is close to level. Well, look, I do not want to produce, change language unless you think that that is something that we're ready to pursue at this time. I mean, we can maintain what we're doing, and Nancy will continue to get gray hairs, and we will continue, and I think with the buildings department's support, we're going to address some of the constructability problems and catch those early. But, you know, that was one of the items that came from this body, as wanting us to look at, and we did kind of workshop it with some of the folks in the industry out there, and they weren't 100% opposed, so.
What did other places do? Didn't, I thought you all had checked on some others.
It's pretty much a mixed bag out there, and a lot of them require it, and a lot of them allow it to be done under a performance bond and at time of home construction.
Most of the people who, you know, that one subdivision, the DR Horton subdivision, didn't complain too much. Most of the individuals that complained were minor subdivisions and some, you know, smaller ones along the road frontage, where the people didn't want to build the sidewalk, when it didn't connect on either side, so after the houses were built. I'd love to see it's give it a shot.
Yes, conceptually, it sounds a lot cleaner and easier.
Maybe the lesser of two evils, basically.
I mean, there's no perfect answer.
The asset on some curve, are they technically part of the sidewalk? Because, as you said, division, we walk a lot, I walk a lot every morning around the same site. I walk with dogs every morning around the thing, so I didn't see a lot of that. The trees are sometimes planted very close to the sidewalk, and the smaller ones that they plant first, you've got to walk around those anyway, you've got to get off sidewalk distances from the trees of the sidewalk to be good. But incorporating the storm drain into the sidewalk, the sidewalk will settle, and there'll be a lift, you know, and then try to wrap around the top of the S inlet versus not having that part of the sidewalk. Are those the kind of considerations that we need to be aware of, too?
They, we should, and I will tell you, that shouldn't be happening for this very reason. Our typical road cross section says there shall be an eight-foot planting strip from the back of curb to the front face of the sidewalk. So unless it's an S inlet that's way overdesigned, it shouldn't be protruding back eight foot.
Sidewalks in Hawthorne Glen, what I'm talking about, the grass strip-
About an 18-inch, yeah. Well, that's not allowed by our regulation. This body would have to give a waiver to do that because the idea is the street tree location is within that eight-foot planting strip.
Sometimes the light pole is within four foot of the road, and they just go around with sidewalks and light poles in the middle.
Well, see, that's the other thing is, at least if all of that is done at final plat, those little conflicts that then have to be worked out with the sidewalk are addressed during construction, and you don't end up with those things like signs built into the sidewalk, or a weird jog going around a transformer, or a light fixture or something of that nature. It's a little cleaner, plus the design engineer is overseeing his design as part of the construction of the-
Continuing education credits for the ADX workshop.
I'll find out.
This workshop?
I believe so. For Eric, I believe so.
Oh, good.
Are you hurting for some credits right now?
25, no.
I've already got my 15 this year, so.
And just to clear up something, what you said about the signs being, we do check those at the time we release the performance bond or reduce it. We do do an inspection to make sure we try to catch all that kind of stuff.
I can't, but I can imagine the performance bond issue that you're dealing with, that's nonsense. That's atrocious. I have to deal with them in my business, too, but we don't, I don't reduce them as they move along.
Well, we did that-
They keep the whole, they keep the whole bond until they're finished.
We do it, it's the happy medium. It's so those guys aren't out there forever with a continuous bond, we get to inspect as we go. It was the best thing we could come up with, and that's not perfect.
But it is kind of a pain when somebody has got to get their bond updated, and we've got to run out there and count lots and figure, okay, this one has sidewalks, this doesn't. So they were supposed to build 3,000 feet, and we've measured that they've built 1,500 feet, so they need to bond 1,600 feet remaining, you know.
If you're building the sidewalks at the time of the beginning of development-
That takes that out of play. Yeah. I mean, I don't know if there's a perfect solution here, but I know that was something this body wanted us to at least think about. And this is, Nancy and I have had conversations, Dwayne and I, I've talked to a lot of my colleagues that are private engineers for their private development, and, you know, and again, I think they have mixed emotions. They're always concerned about their client's cost, but they also are concerned about their design, too, and, you know, so it's a mixed bag there. Nothing has to happen today, but I just want to let you know that we didn't forget about that, and that is, that is a consideration that we could. You know, again, the city council is the final approver of changes of our land use ordinance and our subdivision regulations, you know, and, no?
Not for subracks.
Really? Okay, well.
Not counting them.
Oh, wow. Okay, well, I take that back then.
Was Daphne?
Daphne approved sort of changes in subdivision regulations, so.
The city council?
Yep, yep. So, well, again, I think we definitely want to make sure council is supportive or expresses their concerns. I mean, because I think this is a collaborative effort, and as Mr. Burrell pointed out, a lot of times, they get the angry phone calls.
They get the calls.
So that's all I had on sidewalks, and, you know, again, that may be something we pick up and have further discussion, but I think if you're okay without getting too involved is at least show you what that draft language would look like so that y'all can at least be thinking about it.
Does that include the bonding issue also? We mentioned we were talking about bonding. Was that all sidewalks and bonding?
That's the nice thing is if the sidewalks are built at final plat, there is no performance bond required at that time.
Except for street trees.
But they still warranty bond, or what we could call a workmanship and materials bond for all the improvements within the right of way, which would capture the sidewalks since those improvements would be there at that point in time.
Thank you.
But you, wait, 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 one more thing, just to be clear. But they're tied down to certificate of occupancy?
Yes.
Yeah, that would make that be some change.
Mr. Chairman, next, we'll spend about an hour on the compatibility analysis, if that's okay. That's all we have. Thank you.
All right. We don't have to have a motion since this is not a meeting.
Go with Jerry.
We can just go.